Seventeenth is now five o'clock. We are all present this evening and we have two items on the agenda. And again, council, please refrain from asking question until the staff is finished. The city council will provide feedback on the Parks and Recreation Department's proposed fee and recovery recommendation. Now, I'm going to name them all because we've got the whole gang here tonight, so I want to give everybody. Michael Beadle, Recreation Superintendent, David Side, Parks and Recreation, and of course Nathan, famous Nathan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Yeah. So, you're on board. Go ahead, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We're excited to share an industry emerging approach for establishing cost recovery goals and assigned fees for recreation programs this evening. In simplest terms, we will introduce a method that helps classify programs and assigns recovery goals based on the benefit of the community. Tonight's discussion culminates approximately sixteen months, sixteen-month process that included public participation, organization, research, and of course engagement with the Parks and Recreation Commission, who unanimously voted in favor of bringing tonight's method and discussion forward to council for further discussion. And so with that, I will, you've already introduced David Side, our Parks and Recreation Manager, and Michael Beadle, our Recreation Superintendent, who will lead tonight's discussion. So Dave?
Thank you, Nathan. Good evening, everyone. Tonight's presentation will follow this format here. We're going to hear a little bit of the background on how we developed the policy we're recommending this evening and the three basic components in which consist the ultimate recommendations. So, we're going to kind of go down this, take our time, go down this one by one and be very thorough, just to make sure everybody has a clear understanding of how we arrived at this. So, it's our pleasure to take you on this journey this evening. As you're all well aware of, Parks and Recreation serves a number of folks in the community. So, anything from aquatics programs, active adult programs, special events, special interest classes, you name it, we have a little bit of everything for all in the community. So, we understand the role that we play, we understand the width and breadth of our reach, and we want to make sure that we're providing high-quality programs with a universally-accepted and applied fee and cost recovery expectation to those programs. So, anything that happens in our eighteen parks, our seventy-eight thousand odd participants per year, really, we have to have a sound policy in place that really reflects the current industry standards and best practices. So, I want to go ahead and start with where we currently find ourselves. So, back in May of 2010, the current fee and cost recovery resolution was passed by council. There's an excerpt of that on the slide, and really what it did, it identified a cost recovery goal, it also identified a fee range. So, you can see that there's a bottom range and a top range that all of our programs would fall into as far as the fees that we charge one another. This has worked for the most part very well for the last seven years. However, one of the challenges we do find is as costs increase, we do find ourselves getting towards that ceiling amount, which restricts the amount that we can charge individuals. So, although we may have a cost recovery that we are attempting to achieve, if that top threshold is already being met, it does present some challenges in how we can be responsible and still meet the cost recovery goals. So, that's really where we find ourselves tonight. The opportunity to update our cost recovery and fee policy really came about from the 2014 master plan update. Many of you are here for that presentation and update, and in there, there was two short-term goals related to the fee and cost recovery. So, I've listed those for you this evening, establish a cost recovery requirement for different levels and types of programs, and then also establishment of fee settings and cost recovery goals. So, in line with that, and knowing that we had that objective, we had an opportunity to partner with Arizona State University Marvin Andrews Fellowship Program. So, they were soliciting ideas from various municipalities. We went ahead and submitted our project as a fee and cost recovery study to kind of lay the foundation for getting our update in place, and we were chosen and selected to be a part of that. So, there were doctoral-level students who participated in a fee and cost recovery study, and ultimately, this is what they come up with, was for the fee formula, the percentage of cost recovery times the total cost of program costs divided by the minimum number of participants. Here's a couple items from the full report, and really what stands out, establishing a standard fee structure and achieving cost recovery goals. So, making sure that whatever policy we have in place would allow us to do that not only today but on into the future as programs are added or retired. Really, the methodology that we came about was really identified and focused around three major areas. So, our approach was we wanted to make sure we had broad involvement and input for the cost recovery review. We wanted to reach out to a number of stakeholders, we wanted to reach out to the community in general, we wanted to reach out to participants, we wanted to reach out to our advisory commission, and really make sure that everybody had a voice in making their preferences known. Second step was, we want to develop something that's well-supported and easily understood. We don't want anything too complicated, we want it easily communicated, understood, identified, so when you are in the ice cream aisle and get approached by a resident, you're able to explain how we establish our fees. Ultimately, that all leads us up to the update that we're going to present tonight for your review and input. So, that will get us to something that will be well-supported, easily understood, and will serve the needs of our program fee setting into the future. That gives us a little bit of the background. Now, I want to go ahead and get into what the foundation of the fee policy and cost recovery is, and really, that is the pyramid model. Basically, the pyramid model, if you visualize or can, you know, see up on the diagram, really, it starts at a broad base, broad appeal of community-wide programs. These would be something like your special events, and then it just goes on up into benefit to almost exclusively individual on the top. Marvin Andrews really liked this, they saw a lot of communities were taking and applying this to their community, tweaking it for their local community, and it really had a great effect on the pricing. It's recognized as a best practice throughout the nation, and it really sets the foundation for your fees and cost setting. It's also fluid, and it's easily understood, and you can apply this pyramid model to any I want to take a quick moment on each area here. So, we're going to go ahead and start down with the community, and like I mentioned a little earlier, those are signature citywide special events, little no-cost, no-registration required, appeal for all ages, and they're typically found throughout the nation. So, a common one would be our Fourth of July event, where you see that is something that the community, most communities have some type of Fourth of July celebration, fall festival, home plate for the holidays, those type of things are typically found there. As we go up the pyramid, now we start getting into a combination of community-wide benefit, but also a little bit more individual benefit. So, for example, the next step up on the pyramid, these would be like your open swim programs, where in Arizona, very hot here, it's kind of expected that the, you know, community would have a place that they could cool off and take advantage of some of those programs that have broad appeal and are kind of expected or a staple in high-performing communities. There is some individual benefit, but to a greater good, it's really good for the community. When we go up to the next level, now we're getting into a more balanced individual-community benefit. So, these would be more like your youth sports, your team swim-dive, those type of things, where obviously, there's benefits to the individuals who participate, they learn teamwork, they learn lifelong skills, but there's also opportunity for the community to support a team, so volunteer coaches, getting engaged with our programs to that degree, sponsorships, team moms, just kind of bringing those individuals together, creating a sense of community, so you're kind of hitting both of those types of angles. The next one, we're starting to tip in favor of the highly individual. So, these would be more of your adult sports programs. So, there would be a level and a degree of impact, creating healthy opportunities for adults. However, typically, adult softball, for example, really, the participant is the one that's benefiting from that program. And then lastly, on the tip of the pyramid, exclusively individual. So, probably, the best way to explain this would be a Ramada at a park. So, it's open and it's available to everybody to use, but if you reserve it for an individual party, the community really isn't getting any benefit from that, it's the individual family or group that's getting the benefit. I do want to make sure, tonight, I did mention facility rentals as an example of exclusively individual. However, tonight, we're going to go on program costs and fee setting. We'll come back to you with the actual rentals, rental policy, field rentals, Ramadas, those type of things. That's a little bit more complex, and we definitely want to make sure that we get this understood first, and then we'll tackle the facility rentals at a later date. So, if you notice, that's absent, that's really the reason why it won't be part of tonight's discussion. So, that really lays the foundation, the pyramid model, it really kind of sets the tone, and I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Mike Beadle, and we're going to dive into a little bit more depth on our programs as it would relate to the pyramid model.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So, the next step in this process for us is we have, we have this developed philosophy from Marvin Andrews and from all of those input levels, and so the next step in that process is customizing it for Goodyear, because it's not a cut-and-paste kind of philosophy. And so, what we did was, we took and categorized all of our programs that we offer and applied those to those categories on the pyramid, so the community, individual, community, all the way up to exclusively individual. And so, we had to customize that and place those on the pyramid, and then we looked at that through several different lenses, and really, the first lens in that process is community feedback. So, we really wanted to get broad community feedback on where the community felt there was the level of community benefit. So, we took them through an exercise similar to what we just talked to you about, about how they felt our programs fell on the level of community benefit. We didn't talk about pricing, we didn't talk about cost recovery with those groups, we talked about how much they feel X program benefits the entire community as a whole, and we had them place those programs on the pyramid. And so, we did that with residents throughout, we had several public meetings, we took the topics on the move van out for a spin and went out to several special events, we went to some of our youth sports programs, so we got a lot of different groups involved and invested in the process. And so, we also took it to our Parks and Rec Advisory Commission, and we had them go through the exercise as well, and we also did it with our staff, because we felt that that was also an important, important place to start with our Parks and Rec staff. So, we took all of that data, we gathered that together, and then we looked at that through the lens of best practice. What are the best practices in our industry in Parks and Recreation related to fee and cost recovery? Where are those benchmark cities sitting at in their cost recovery and what they're charging and their pricing for their programs? So, we looked at that and we made some tweaks, and then we also looked at Valley Cities. It's not practical to say, okay, we're going to charge one fee, but it's $300 more than Avondale or Tulson or Buckeye. So, we took that into account as well. So, there's multiple filters that we kind of filtered our program placement through, and really took our time to make sure that it made sense for us, but it also made sense for our city as well. And so, this is how kind of everything fell. Our friend Nathan Jr. over here on the side is going to help us navigate all the way up, all the way up to the top of our pyramid, but we're really going to start down at community. And so, Nathan Jr., when he's thinking about community up there, he's thinking about special events, he's thinking about our signature special events, like Dave mentioned, he's thinking Fourth of July, he's thinking that's a picture of our fall festival and the kids at the costume contest. There's no fee to participate, anybody in the community can come, there's no restrictions, no requirements, anybody at all can come and participate, and then our community activities, which are some of our more specialized things, like our wagon tag, where you probably have to have a dog to come out to wagon tag, or should have a dog or like dogs to come out to wagon tag, but it's not a requirement to attend, it's still free to come out and participate in that program. And so, those are the two that fell in that category. And then, as we move up, we kind of have some more individual benefit, but mostly community benefit, and again, that's where swim lessons and our open swim and our active adult socials fell. And so, swim lessons, a lot of the feedback that we got from the community was, yes, there is a level of individual benefit, because we are teaching youth to swim, but there's also a huge community benefit, especially in Arizona, because there is so much open water everywhere, that there's a ton of value in teaching our youth how to swim, and so that's why that kind of fell, fell in that category as well. And then, and as we continue up the pyramid, there's that balance, and the balance really, again, as Dave mentioned, is like our youth sports. So, there's a skill-building, a basic levels of development on how to hit a baseball or how to spike a volleyball, but really, there is a large amount of community benefit from, you know, teaching kids healthy and active lifestyles and meeting new friends and, you know, just developing all those things in adolescence that they do, that's where there's that community benefit that comes in as well. And then, as we move up there, again, adult trips, our active adult trips, our team sports, our adult team sports, and then are also our adult special interest classes, all fell into that highly individual, where there is some community benefits, there is some socialization, but for the most part, if, for example, you were taking a painting class, you're developing a skill in painting, and you may develop a friend there, but more than likely, your goal is to learn how to paint better, and that's why you're taking that class. So, that's why that fell in there, and then again, facility rentals is really what fell into the exclusive, exclusive individual benefit on that. So, the next thing we're going to jump into, we've got our philosophy, we've got our programs placed on our pyramid, so the next thing to talk about is our cost recovery. And so, once we have our categories, we have those set, we have our programs in those categories, we went and applied ranges of cost recovery to each of those levels in the pyramid. And what those ranges do is they allow for consistent and fluid cost recovery for similar programs based on community benefit. So, that way, the community can feel confident when they're paying for a registration for like programs, they're going to have a similar fee for those programs that have similar benefit to the community. So, it allows for a lot of that, and it also allows, with a range instead of a stagnant number, to allow for adjustments from year to year, so there's not an overreaction to a single year where we have a higher or lower level of cost recovery, we won't have to change the fee, so it gives a little bit of cushion in there as well. One thing to note on our cost recovery is, we applied this with a philosophy of, it accounts for our direct program expenses, which is like our volleyballs, our jerseys, our nets, things like that, those hard costs, and then also our division indirect overheads, so those are those administrative costs, the lights, the facility rentals, the salary of the administrative staff. Those types of things were all applied to the cost recovery percentage. And so, this is where our cost recovery percentage range fell. As you notice, there are minimums and maximums to each of the range, and again, that's because we wanted to provide consistent and we wanted to provide affordable options to the community, and so, we didn't want to set a cost recovery of 5% and then recover at 80%, because that's also not fair to the community, because we can bring that cost down and we can keep it within that range of where we feel the level of benefit to the community is applied. So, 0 to 15% for our lowest one, and as you go up the pyramid, you can kind of see that there's, it goes from 15 to 40, 40 to 70, 70 to 100, and then 100% plus. These programs and these percentages were again, applied based on best practice in the community and also nationwide, and so, we apply those to our programs. This is just another way really to look at the same thing, it really illustrates where the participant fees come into play versus the subsidy on our cost recovery. So, on the left side, as you can see, this is our community benefit, so that's the base of your pyramid. The cost recovery range is 0 to 15%, and then it's subsidized the rest of the way. And as you continue to move up the pyramid, the level of contribution from your participant fees increases and your subsidy decreases, and so that's where we wanted to show, just another way to show how that cost recovery range is going to work for us. So, the percentages are great, the program classification is great, but really, the million-dollar question is how, what effect is it going to have on our programs? And so, this next chart illustrates that. It goes from our current cost recovery target from the current resolution, and then it goes to our recommended cost recovery range. And so, as you kind of see at the top, we have identified program categories that will be affected, and then also program categories that are unaffected. And the big thing to note on this is there's not a direct correlation between the current cost recovery target and the future cost recovery target increase, that won't correlate directly into an increase in program fees. For example, fall baseball, that would fall under our youth sports category. The current cost recovery is 30%, our recommended range is 40 to 70%. Right now, we're sitting at a recovery level of about 50%. So, although there's an increase in the target range, there's not going to be actually any increase in the participant fees for that program, because we already fall within that range, and Dave is going to take us through that in a little bit more detail. But again, this is just about adjusting the target cost recovery goal, not the actual cost recoveries of that.
Thank you, Mike. Okay. This really illustrates in a nutshell what the pricing formula looks like. So, this is how fees will be set by staff, and it really reiterates the foundation from the Marvin Andrews study, is that we're going to take that cost recovery, multiply that by the program expenses, and divide by the expected number of participants to arrive at our fee. So, this is really the foundation of pricing. So, once we have our programs placed on our pyramid and we have the expected cost recovery percentage established, now we can go into the actual formula that we will use. So, that's illustrated on this slide. Like Mike mentioned, although there are some categories that are being adjusted, really, when all said and done, the effect of tonight's recommendation would really impact six programs. So, percentage-wise, it's a very small percentage of our programs that would be affected, we've attempted to illustrate that with a graph on this slide. Eighty-eight percent of our programs already fall within our recommended fee and cost recovery update. There are six programs that would be affected, and I'm going to go ahead and dive in a little detail to those six programs on the next slide here. So, we've listed those six individual programs on the top here. So, everything below that solid black line is unaffected, everything above are the six programs that are, of the six, one actually would go down in price. So, we're really looking at five programs that would see a modest increase in fees. So, really, swim, or excuse me, swim and dive team, we really want to get that in line with the youth sports category. So, it was a little below that, but in our research and study, we found that similar benefits to the community, similar sentiments from the community when we did our study, so we would recommend getting that into that 40 to 70% cost recovery. What does that mean? On the far right there, our current fee is $60, what this update would do would bring that up to $70. And you can see for open swim, we're currently $1.50, that would go up to $2. Swim lessons actually would go down, very popular program, program that impacts a number of children every year, very proud of our high-quality swim lessons, those actually go down. Again, there's your swim team, modest increase up to 70. Summer recreation program, so there's a little adjustment there, the current cost recovery is 37%, the recommendation is to go to a 40 to 70% range, and what that means is on a $215 program, it would go up to $230. The adult trips really varies, because all of those trips are priced and customized, so if you're going to a day trip in Flagstaff, you know, it's priced out based on those expenses, or if you're going just to a day trip locally to a museum, obviously, there's a much lower cost to that. So, that really varies, but it's really an industry best practice to pass along a bulk of that program cost to the participant, because it is such a specialty program. I do want to reiterate that we do have the active adult socials, our BUNCO, those type of things, very popular, very important to high-quality communities, those would be unaffected. It's just really those trips where if you're going on a day trip, say, to Flagstaff, you would pay a little bit higher percentage of that program cost. Lastly, I do want to spend a moment or two talking about discounts and surcharges. So, we definitely want to present a recommendation to allow the department director through delegation of authority to be able to administer some discounts and surcharges. So, first of all, discounts, we do have a few of those listed there, so based on early bird registration, we definitely want to encourage folks and incentivize those to sign up early. It really helps the programming staff, planning, purchasing, securing venues, facilities, equipment, those type of things. So, anything we can do to incentivize early registration and give a little bit of a price break, we think that's a good policy to consider, as well as multi-child discount. So, if you're a family and you have two, three, four children of school age, and you want to get them into that summer recreation program, you know, you can see that that can be kind of a burden, so we would like to, you know, suggest that as a consideration, as well as online discounts, returning participant, those type of things. In addition to discounts, we do want to spend a moment on surcharges. So, obviously, when we speak on serving the community, serving the residents, we definitely want to make sure that our residents are getting the highest-quality programs at the lowest possible cost. Those non-residents, we definitely welcome them, we encourage their participation, and in some instances, they actually enhance our program. So, instead of having maybe eight adult softball teams, we may have 10 or 12, which improves the quality of our league, but ultimately, we do want to recognize that those non-residents do, you know, need to pay a little bit more than the residents who pay taxes directly to the city of Goodyear. And another example would be late registration. So, we do everything we possibly can to get late registrations placed on teams, placed on programs, but ultimately, you know, we want to incentivize early bird and maybe discourage people from late registration by maybe having a late registration fee applied to a program fee.[1795.65][1795.65] So that gets us back to our agenda tonight. We've covered pretty much the three major areas of the fee and cost recovery recommendation. We do want to hear your feedback and answer any questions you may have concerning tonight's presentation. This slide really sums it all up, if you will. You have your pyramid, which is your base of your pricing and your cost recovery. You have our Goodyear programs listed on there. You have percentage cost recovery listed, and you really have the fee formula, as well as the ability to administer some of those surcharges and discounts. So with that, I would like to conclude our portion of presenting and open it up for questions or comments.
Thank you. Nice presentation. Who would like to start? Sherry?
I'm thinking.
You're thinking. Joe?
Any idea on the overall budget impact for next budget year as a result of these implementations? Going up 5%, 3%, 2%, flat? Anything along those lines?
Yeah. We ran the numbers on what the impact would have, and based on FY '17 numbers going into next year, we'd have about a 2% increase, which is about $8,400 in increase in revenue. And that's due to, some of the programs went up, but something like swim lessons did go down slightly. So, it's about 2%.
The other question I was noticing up there on those six items that are going up, from my perspective, anything that allows the young adults spare time to be used on something that'll help them grow, whether it's swim lessons or sports, you know, I have no problem in some of the subsidies that you have on there. The one that kind of jumped out at me a little bit was the open swim going up. And is that the ones that would show up at our swimming pool that we have? Okay. The question I have is, when you did your outreach, was the $1.50 to the $2 jump, may not sound a lot, but it may be a lot to sum, especially if they have a lot of kids. How would you address, how did you address that? That's the one that kind of jumped out at me for that, for those people that use that pool.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Brazillo. Really, what tonight's discussion, we're really focusing on the cost recovery policy. The pricing exercise really is a result after you, you know, establish that. So, when we had users go through that, we really had an open mind of, in general terms, where do you see this fit in value to the community? What do you feel your fellow residents would support? The discussion really centered around the placement of the pyramid. Obviously, we're very sensitive to any program increases, and we do recognize that going from $1.50 to $2, you know, could be a challenge and present a burden to some individuals. We do have a scholarship program that people can participate into if program pricing does become a barrier to participation. We do outreach to community groups. We had the Kiwanis group do free swim on a day last summer. So we look for opportunities to, you know, maximize the availability of the pool to those that may be impacted.
Thank you, Dave. Councilmember Brazillo, Mayor, that is a great point. And through this process, very easily, although this is the analysis, the output that came from the collective inputs from community and Parks and Recreation Commission, you're able, right now at this stage, to say that you feel like open swims should be subsidized higher to stake at that $1.50 rate and put them into that lower-level tier, should you wish to do so. So, that is a possibility.
Joe, I'm going to limit you to one question, because I want to go around and find out the other council on that particular subject, okay? So before you...
Well, I'll just let you know, I prefer what he just recommended. I'll go on the record, I would like to see that one more subsidized, if you're going to ask that question.
Okay. Any other councilperson on this one? Yes, Sherry.
Just on the swim, right?
Yeah, just on this one. I want to make sure we've all, I don't, I don't want us to come back to this question. I want to solve it and then go on to the next, okay?
Thank you, Mayor. Just for clarity, specifically the open swim program.
That's what I'm talking about, the open swim.
I think, I would have to agree. I like that idea, Nathan, to bring it down to the tier, especially because we only do have the one pool. And then perhaps relook at the pricing when we do open the second pool to see how we're going to do it, because that I'm sure will be more costs associated with that. But if it's something that could be done, I think that would be a great idea to subsidize that more as well.
Anybody else? Wally?
I like having the open swim, and because of the multi-children discount, Litchfield charges $3 a person to swim in their pool. That's what I pay when I go over there, if I take my grandchildren there. And they pay $3. But, we can get a non-resident punch card that's cheaper if I'm taking them more than once or twice. But, because you can do the multi-child discount, and you could also do scholarship help with the families that maybe have four, five, six kids, and especially where our pool is located, it's in a high area with lots of children and lots of families. So, I know we need to do some cost recovery. I have no problem with you charging $2 versus $1.50, but I just think if we did a, if we could do a family pass that is at a reduced rate, that would be wonderful. Or a multi-children, if a grandmother brings four grandchildren, so she doesn't pay $3 for each child, or $2 for each child over three years of age, and she could pay $5 and bring all of them or something, you know? We encourage them to come back.
Joanne?
That's a very good point, Wally. And actually, on that punch card idea, which I think is fabulous, you know, that's something that, as a parent, I would want, if you had the city that had just a little file drawer that had everybody's punch card in it, that the kids weren't walking back and forth, because you know how many of those punch cards would get lost? If you kept them there at the pool where the kids came in and they knew that was the punch on their ticket, would be fabulous, because I could see that being an issue. And certainly at Loma Linda. I mean, we discussed this years ago, when there was issues about Loma Linda of even being able to keep it going. And it was like, absolutely not would we shut down that pool in that area. And so, I appreciate that. And I recognize that things increased, and we're going to go further into some points here, but there's still always going to be an item that we have to single out and say, what is the benefit to the true community on it?
Any other on this one? I would just like to comment that I didn't think it was that high of a raise in it, because of all the other things that the families can do. I liked what Wally said, but I do want to make note that you pay for the guards. You pay for these people. And I think hourly income went up, right? Not the state, but the people? So, as you progress in this, I want you to think about that, because, did you work that into this program at all?
Those were part of our FY '17 numbers, yes.
So, considering that, I'm happy with the way you've done it. I think the idea that we have a group that can buy a punch ticket if you want, I don't know what the punch ticket would cost, so now we've got to put that in it, so that doesn't come free, and who manages that, and who watches that, and reviews it, because it gets thrown back in the drawer. So there's a lot of complication on that. Not that I don't think it's a good idea, there's just complication, and that means cost. Means someone's standing there doing that job. Now we hire one more person to be able to do that. So these are the things I want us to think about. My view is about the raise in it, I don't think it's a problem. Any other comments? Yes, Joe, on this, right?
Yes, on this. My only concern, because there are maybe some families, for pride or whatever reason, that can't afford it, won't approach and ask for discounts along those lines. I just want to make sure that whatever price we put in there, that kids that have been swimming don't end up not able to use the facility for those type of reasons. And that's my biggest, if we can find ways to get that across, but you know as well as I do, there are some families, for whatever reason, won't tell you that they can't afford it, the kids just won't show up. And I want to make sure that we have a place, because that pool's great, and that area's great, to make sure there's a place for those kids to go in the summertime, which is more productive in the pool than out running around somewhere else.
Well, that's up to us to make it so you advertise it such, and advertise such that someone feels very comfortable to call this number to find out other arrangements. I don't know how you would put, but there's got to be a way that we can get that, that's our job to get that out to the families.
Mayor and council, if I may, the actual impact of that 50 cents per swimmer, per open swim, is only approximately $3,000 of additional revenue per year. So, again, I think the probably easiest approach for dealing with this issue, and again, I'm trying to understand the consensus here, is that possibly consider moving open swim into that lower category of community-wide benefit and keeping the charge where it's at today.
Brandon? We didn't call him Brandon.
I'm good. I'm good now.
So, my request is that you track that for the year, and I want to see what the loss is and what the gain is, okay? So, how many people are attending? So that we track this. There's no use keeping the price, the same price, or doing what, if we're not going to track it, we don't know. So that's my request, yes.
And obviously, with that cost recovery, you know, when the new pool gets developed and everything, I think that's something we all have to keep in mind, that that's going to be a lot more maintenance for the next pool, and we're going to probably have to look at these just for the pool again, because I'm not sure how that's all going to be set up. So I just think I want people to be aware that it probably won't be able to stay at that low.
It won't be the target for the new pool, no.
No, so I think we need to be quite aware of that for citizens.
Okay, were you finished with that question? All right. Next question. You have a question, and anything else was presented tonight?
I do, but...
Okay. Bill?
Just, thanks, the presentation was very in-depth. The only question, and it's really not even that important, the delegation of authority for discounts, is that, if we don't have it written down, that just leaves it up to very subjective. So is there, I realize you're not going to put it necessarily in the cost recovery ordinance? We can have written policy that says when we can and cannot, or how do we protect ourselves from some challenges we've had in the past?
Yes, thank you for that question. Yes, the thought is that we will formalize those internally and have them as our internal procedures. They will be applied. For example, the multi-child discount will be something that's developed and put in concrete. It's not going to change from, you know, family to family, it will be what we utilize. So we will come up with these plans and use them as our standard operating procedures.
Will we be able to secure a, I don't want to call it an audit, but some, we've got very hard checks and balances in there?
Yeah, absolutely. And we understand that this is a different approach to how we've looked at fees in the past, and so, we do think that it's necessary to come back and provide you a status update after a year, and just kind of let you know how things have worked out and report back on that, as well as all of our internal audit procedures will apply.
Okay, thanks.
Any other question? Yes, Wally?
Okay, thank you. I'm just going to have some general comments. I really appreciate the engagement that you used in bringing the stakeholders, the residents, the advisory commission, and then your staff together. It is so important when we're going to do something that's going to affect every resident in this city, that they be at the table to find out what they think we ought to be doing, because we do make policies and we do make ordinances, but we have to know what the public wants and what they perceive for their park and rec department. And we have one of the finest park and rec departments in the West Valley, and we're so grateful for all that you do every day and your staff, because you make such an impact on the young people of our community. And it is so important that we keep the excellence that we continue to do every day in our programs. The multi-children's discount is extremely important. I did forget to mention that during the summer, I pop into La Loma quite frequently, just to look around. I don't go swimming, but I walk around, and several of the grandmothers that were there had asked me, couldn't we please get a multi-children discount? And I told them that I'm sure we would entertain it, I didn't know if we would be able to do it, but they themselves were thinking about how it would help, especially on the days that they bring everybody out, the whole family. The cost recovery should encompass as much of the expenses as we feel is feasible. While we do have wonderful programs, like the adult, the adult programs definitely should be 100% recoverable, because the adults know there's a certain fee, if you're going to go to a castle, or you're going to go somewhere, it's going to cost that much money, plus you have to have expenses for the automobile and gas and whatever. So that's not an issue, and it doesn't affect the big people.
Right after that, does anybody have any comment on what Wally just said about the adult program? I want to keep this segmented, so that we, everybody has an opinion. So, she brought up the adult program, so anybody have a comment on that?
Question or comment?
The adult softball, things like that, I guess my only, my only comment would be, I understand, well, there's the trips, and then there's like, adult softball. And so, the trips, definitely, you know, 100%, I can understand that. One thing to be, that I just want, and you kind of hit upon it, so I think I feel good about it, but when you have the adults paying 100% of what they're doing, adult softball, prime example, and then they're having to pay the fees for the ball fields and the lights, then all of a sudden, it's like, what did that package look like altogether? Because that's where I've heard over the years, some complaint. It's one thing of what it costs to be on a team, and then it was another of what it was, they were charged for having practice, or needing the lights, or the fields, whatever. And then it was like, okay, did that just take us out of being, you said you were benchmarking, so where were we then compared to Avondale and to Buckeye? Because, you know, were we really good in teams, but when you brought in the whole package for that softball season, you know, we were $200 more. I'm just saying, you know, making sure you look at it as a package for a season, per se.
We most certainly did, and I'll attempt to answer this one, and then pass to Mike here, because he's been quite passionate about the adult softball and the pricing out of the market. So, we are probably on a little bit the higher range existing right now for adult softball that hasn't hurt participation. This won't move or affect that pricing, it won't see an increase for that reason that you just mentioned. So, is that...
Yeah, absolutely. And to talk on the topic of the package of the practices and the lights, that's the next step for us, is really to go back and take a look at that as a part of the next step in the process, because that's part of our facility rental process. And so, the next step after we establish these fees for our programs is really to take a look at those facilities and ensure those line up with community needs as well, and ensure that our cost recovery goals and plans for the community line up, again, with facility rental. So we're going to be looking at both of those as well.
Would you put them on the screen, the price and cost recovery on all the screens? So as people in the audience are looking, or people online are looking? It's just one. Yeah, okay. Is that the one dive team? Yeah, that's it. Okay, thank you. Any comment about that?
No. I have two more.
All right. Before you get to speak again, anybody else want to speak next?
Not about the adult.
No?
I got a general thing on adult program.
Okay, I just don't want one person to ask all the questions, so I'm trying to get this out tonight, make it go, move a little bit better. So, anybody on what she wanted, all right? Anybody has another question? You have one question apiece, and we go on to the next one. Now it's yours.
I got one.
Everybody's going to get a say-so tonight, and I want to make sure that we don't get it all, the questions out in one person's mouth, so go ahead.
So, yeah, I like the general model of it, I like the idea of it, I think it's good. And I had a question though, on the cost, on this actual slide right here, so, actually, no, farther down, cost recovery percentages. So you said the target previous was the one, and then they had the range, so is that, so you have more options to keep going up as things change? Or how does that, I know you already talked about it a little bit, it affects just the target, but when would that target start going up? Is it just the amount of people, the formulas changed, essentially?
Yeah, thank you for the question, Councilmember Hampton. Yeah, the, so the luxury with the cost recovery range is with the fee formula, when we apply that fee formula, that cost recovery percentage allows us some flexibility within that range Yeah, thank you for the question, Councilmember Hampton. Yeah, the, so the luxury with the cost recovery range is with the fee formula, when we apply that fee formula, that cost recovery percentage allows us some flexibility within that range. And so the fees won't be adjusted until they fall out of either end of that range. So if the percentage of cost recovery falls above, so we'll take, for example, U-Sports, if our cost recovery fell above 70% or below 40%, that's when you'd see an adjustment to the fee. Anything that falls within that range at any point, the, the fees will maintain the same.
Right.
Next, Sheri?
Thank you all for your hard work, and I know reaching out, this took a lot of work. So I do want to thank you. It looks like it's very stable, that we don't have very few, if any, increases. And just from my experience, it looks like we are probably still lower than some of the private organizations. And maybe you could address that, so people know, like U-Sports and stuff, were still, seem to me to be lower.
I'll, I'll take that. I'm happy to start with that one. The, the fees are probably lower than, than what can be paid for in the, in the private sector. And again, we feel our, it's all about value of the programs and the impact on the community. And so, you know, I think Mike, a couple of weeks ago, put us a, a survey fact on, on the, up on the presentation that said, it's like 86%?
Eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight percent of, of kids participating in our programs are meeting new friends that they're spending time with out of our programs. And so understanding that there is real community value to our programs, which is why I think that we're priced accordingly for that.
And I just need to give you all a compliment. My daughter's doing the volleyball now. Slight problem, they had it fixed within a day. This is a great group, and they just are absolutely wonderful programs.
Comment on that discussion? All right, Wally, you can ask your other question.
I just wanted to say, whoa, check my list, that I think the early bird registration is a wonderful thing to do. All of us like to get $5 off if we register early, or even $3 off. And the returning participant, that's great. Online discount is good. And the non-resident, it's given. If you go to any other park district in the state of Arizona, actually in the United States, and you're going to play a sport or take a class, and you're a non-resident of that city, you know you will be paying a higher fee. So thank you, that's all I had. I didn't really have any questions. I just had general comments.
To support some of the comments made, very positive tonight, and I appreciate that. I do want to make commentary, pass around, and you know, I always look at those big events we have. And we see a great number of Avondale, and we see, you know, you see them the same time. So I'm glad to see that we're looking at that aspect, that residents of Goodyear has offered a little differently than somebody from the other. Not that I don't want them to come and visit our city, but that's fair. Joanne?
I just wanted to say, I appreciate you researching this. You know, we had a time that was, that was stressful years ago in our city, where fees just across the board hadn't been watched over. And, you know, this is efficient by doing it in a timely manner, so that we're not sitting in a place with our city that all of a sudden, we're like, oh, my God, we got to raise everything, you know? And people freak out. And so when it's, when it's done in a, in a, in a formula, which you've done, I appreciate the pyramid, I appreciate the, the, the way that you kind of prioritize things, you know, I think that's good. And this is understandable. And, and I'm really proud of what's occurred over the years with the after-school and, and out-of-school programs, because for years, I've asked for these things, and we just couldn't afford it, we just couldn't do it, you know? And so I'm, I'm thrilled that, that we've been able to, to help out our parents and our families with those programs. I, you know, all in all, I think everything's good. And you said that the Parks Commission also blessed it, and they, they went over everything. So, you know, I, I think you're doing a good job. And no one likes to pay anymore for anything, but I'd much rather it be in these little steps than all of a sudden, they get hit with, you know, $100 fee or something more. And we don't want to see that. So thank you very much.
Well, I will end it by saying, it's, we have a great value on the program, all right? So we pay for the value, and it will, it will sustain us. It'll sustain the value that we're going to give to the public. So now, one more. Jo, I'm sorry.
Just, just a final comment. I, I really appreciate the approach. Very simple. Put them in the right categories, and it makes it a lot easier on how you're going to allocate the cost. The fact you got the buy-in, as Wally had mentioned, from the, from the public, even makes it better. So, but when you explain it like that, somebody on the outside, it makes it very easy. Why is this fee this, and why is the others? You know, my only question, as you kind of go through there, is, is, like I mentioned before, is just make sure on the community benefit, when it comes to the kids' sports and all that, that's probably where I'm a little softer than on the, you know, adult side, because out here, in my view, you want them to have a place to go that's productive, then no place to go and idle minds. So that's kind of my focus, when I see us having these abilities for the, for the kids at reasonable price to be at these type of events. It's better than being there than maybe out somewhere else where you don't want them. So, okay, thank you.
Any other comments?
I apologize, I just say one. And, and just for our citizens to realize that our main events, Fourth of July, home plate for the holiday, gain, all those things were not changing. Those are still continuing to be, okay, thank you.
Any, any other comments?
I just, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree with everybody else here, too. I think we need to make sure our, the Goodyear brand, essentially, we do great quality products, and I, I like that we continue to do that. So I appreciate all your hard work with, with all of these, I mean, these community events that bring everybody together and help people get, get better and grow close to each other. So it's a great programs. Thank you.
You can leave this council meeting, um, work session tonight, feeling very good about yourself. Do you have anything else you want to add to it? I see you talking. Is there anything else?
Mayor and Council?
You still have the floor.
Thank you. Just, just so we are very, very clear, because we will bring, be bringing this back for, for an actual action item, in terms of consensus for looking at open swim and moving that to the full community-wide level, which would be that lower tier. Is there consensus for that now, or?
Is that the $2 charge?
That would keep the charge at, at $1.50, as opposed to moving it to $2.
I have a question on that. Now that we, you're thinking it that way, what does happen when the new pool's built, and everybody thinks that it's in that category? What happens there?
And, and it may be until we kind of get an idea of what the, those costs are with the amenities that go in, that, that may affect. If those amenities are a little more expensive to operate, then that will, it may not affect the, the tier level of where it goes, but it will affect the price, because your, your, their costs may be more to operate.
I just want to make a note, putting the card less to, to cover the costs.
Yes.
I just want to bring that up again. Yes, Bill?
Is it, what would be wrong with there being two different costs, one at Loma Linda Pool and one at the Rec Center? I mean, there's.
There may be, because typically, you're going to pay for the types of amenities that are, that are in that facility. And so where Loma Linda is a basic open water swim, the new facility may have water slides and other amenities that are more attractive, that are going to be a little more expensive to operate, which, based on this model, will, will have, will be more expensive.
So I'm really not sure where we're at. So you just.
Yeah, I don't know either. That's, that was my other question.
If I may, Councilmember, so I think you make a great point, because I think if, if you have the new facility coming online, that's, that's a different level of amenity. And so really what we did with a lot of these categories is like, with our adult programs, we broke up our adult program to be adult trips and active adult socials. So I think if we see that there's a need there, and we see that there's going to be a need there, we can leave that open swim at Loma Linda down in that 0 to 15% category. But if we feel like the level of amenity and the level of benefit to the community is at a different category for the new facility, there's no reason we can't break that out, up into a higher category, and put that one in the 15 to 40% level category, and that may solve that issue.
Sounds like a good compromise. Everybody, yeah?
Yeah.
I think you've got it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All right, thanks a lot. Appreciate it. Did you have one more thing? You went to there on microphone.
One last thing, Mayor and Council, I did want to recognize the work of, of Michael Beatle and David Seid on this lengthy process, very in-depth. And this is something typically that would be outsourced to an outside consultant, and they did it here in-house with the help of, with the help of the Marvin's Institute. So just wanted to recognize their efforts on this.
Thank you very much. Michael, great job, and we do recognize that. Thank you very much. All right, let's go on to the second item. Staff will seek council's direction regarding their process improvements for their preliminary plat approvals. We have Christopher Baker, Development Service Director and Planning Manager, Katie Welkin, presenting.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you very much for giving us this opportunity to present an idea that staff-generated regarding a process improvement for the preliminary plat approval process. So Katie and I are very excited tonight to present this concept and idea, idea to you for your consideration, discussion, and ultimately, we hope, some policy direction. But before we get to the specifics of the idea and concept, what we wanted to do is just kind of outline the discussion that we're going to have this evening. First, we're going to briefly outline our lean journey and our accomplishments. We know that you all have been through the development continuum and taken the tour, so we're not going to hit every single thing. But just to refresh your memory, just give you a brief outline of that. We're also going to present to you what the current state process and timelines are for a project to earn preliminary plat approval. And then we're going to finally discuss the idea and concept we have about the process improvement for preliminary plats. Before we get too terribly far, I think it's important for, for all of us to, to have a common understanding of why there's a benefit on an efficient approval process for a project. Efficient approvals result in accelerated building timeframes. An efficient, effective, timely, and certain process yields new home builders and new product diversity. It accelerates construction sales tax, yields new capital investment, which brings jobs, brings and accelerates new rooftops into the community, which is a critical component of retail success. And it also adds to our daytime population, which, as you know from the previous conversations and presentations with our economic development colleagues, is also critical to retail success. And importantly, it is also results in an expansion of our tax base. One other important thing to note just about the home building community is that Phoenix is unique in, is relatively unique in the nation in terms of the fact that our housing market is dominated by large national corporations. And so these, these companies have to compete amongst, internally, about capital deployment. So a company X that's located in Phoenix is competing with company X that has a project that they want to do in Dallas, for example. So they're competing over finite resources. So that time of a return on investment, when, when will they see, you know, monies returned to the coffers, is very important for these national home building corporations in order to make a decision on where to, where to pursue a project. And so that's, that's an important story that we learned from speaking with some of our customers. The proposed change that we're going to discuss tonight is, directly impacts and implements the direction, policy, and the expectations that the council has previously set forth. Staff believes that the idea we're going to discuss is squarely supported by the council's priorities. Just a couple of highlights on this slide for you. The proposed change for the preliminary plat approval process is supported by the general plan, which calls for the integration of business-friendly practices, to review our development process, to make sure that it implements and adheres to best practices, to streamline the development process. It's also, this concept and idea is also supported by the council's strategic action plan under fiscal resources goal and economic vitality goal, which states to use process improvements to essentially result in positive gains for the city, and also to streamline the development services process to support local economic development. I'd also like to point out that this idea and concept is expressly supported by item number six of this 2017 City Manager Outcomes, which states to focus on the development continuum and the evaluation and implementation of process improvements.
So we wanted to take a moment and review some of the improvements we've made to the development continuum. The ones listed here directly impact the residential approval process. Just a reminder, the development continuum includes the Economic Development Department, Engineering Department, and Development Services Departments. And as council knows from the lean tours, there's numerous improvements being made. These are just a few highlights. So we've streamlined our applications and submittal forms. We used to have 17 different types of forms, now we have three. That's really important to be clear to our customers, so they can have successful submittals and understand the process. We've instituted legal office hours, so we could have better collaboration with our partners in the legal team. That, along with adjusting the date of our Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, allowed us to take the turn time from Planning Commission to City Council to just a week and a half, which I don't think can be beat by any other city in the valley. It used to be about five weeks between Commission and City Council. We, as you know, council recently adopted some revisions to the engineering design standards and policy manual. We're internally aligning our resources, and one example of this is, we used to do, well, we do an administrative review. We're required by state law to do that, but it used to take four business days. We used to have to do all this routing. It seemed to be a mystery. But through creating some submittal checklist, redoing how I do our pre-application meetings, it's now done at the counter in about 10 minutes, and it used to take four days. We now work on one thing at a time. I know that sounds amazing. We're multitaskers at heart, but we work on one project, complete it, then pick up another project. And again, that with looking at flow, which is really the responsibility of the managers, to make sure we're assigning projects across divisions at the same time, has allowed us to improve our turn times significantly. So this has all resulted in some really amazing accomplishments. So in 2016, we had 164 applications year-to-date, which was basically through the end of August, and a city review time of 14 business days. In 2017, that's 253, which is an increase of 54%. But we've reduced our city review time by 21% to 11 days. So our submissions are increasing, but we're actually able to do it in less time. And just a reminder, for those maybe listening, we haven't added any staff to help us achieve this. The other really fun thing about this is better customer integration. We're, we're truly collaborating with our customers. And just this picture that we snapped, you can see Pete Tyke from Newland Communities in a cubicle with a planner. I would challenge other cities to produce a picture like this. I do not think that this is happening elsewhere. But what it means is, we truly are collaborating. We're sitting down and figuring out solutions with our customers, which results in win-win outcomes and a true focus on quality solutions. So we talk to all of our customers. We're constantly seeking feedback and learning how to improve. And what's amazing is, we are hearing that our review times are the best in the valley. We hear a lot of comments from our customers, that they're noticing that we're trying to improve our processes. And with development picking up, there's a lot of customers that haven't seen us since before the downturn, and they are amazed at our new processes that they remember from way back when, 10 years ago. However, what we're also hearing is that review times are only a portion of what's really important to our customers in the overall review process. And the most insignificant things that are important are predictability in the process, as well as the speed, which Christopher's going to go into.
So as Katie mentioned, it's always important that we listen and make an effort to, to understand how our customers are perceiving the job that we're doing. But it's also equally as important to understand how our employees think that we're doing as well. The innovation in, in the development throughout the development continuum, and specifically in, in Development Services, has frankly been contagious. And this is a survey question that was asked in 2014, 16, and 17, same exact question. And so by using our lean management tools and our systems that we've deployed over the last year and a half to two years or so, we've really, as you can see, made a dramatic impact in the way that our employees see our operations in terms of supporting and encouraging innovation and creative solutions. Just to put some numbers on those charts for you, in 2014- Just to put some numbers on those charts for you, in 2014, 44 percent of employees thought that we supported innovation and encouraged it. In 2016, it increased to 63 percent, and then in 2017, it increased to 78 percent. But this has been achieved by focusing on teamwork and collaboration, communication, and that yield of that is innovation.
But again, it's really important to note that lean is continuous improvement. Our job is never done. We can always find ways to do things better. So some things we're currently working on, as you already know, we're working on some major amendments to the zoning ordinance. We're also constantly looking for ways to improve it. So you're going to see, like, the big residential amendment is coming soon, but we also have more minor amendments coming through all the time. We're working to standardize our forms and processes even more. We're doing a really good job doing it by each division, but how can we standardize them across the whole development continuum so it feels even more like a seamless process to our customers? We're looking at how to implement more flow, specifically how to create these cross-divisional flow cell teams of reviewers from building, from engineering and planning, so that they can work together even more collaboratively and have more empowerment to work as a team on their reviews together. And then how can we be even clearer to our customers about what they need to do? Just an example, how can we work on our website to improve the information on there so our customers know what to expect from the process?
So as Katie mentioned a little bit ago, we're always seeking input from our customers. And to that end, as part of our lean journey, we focused in on had voice of the customer meetings. Again, it was an opportunity for some unvarnished feedback about our successes and opportunities for us to improve. And so one of the things that we heard from this is that the preliminary process— preliminary plat process in Goodyear takes longer than most other jurisdictions in the valley. And so we asked, well, why is that a concern to the development community that we were visiting with? And the answer was is that it's a concern because it inserts additional risk, there's uncertainty in the process, it takes longer, there's more steps to the process, consultants have to be engaged over a longer period of time, there's more effort to earn an approval. And most importantly, it impacts the timeliness of being able to deliver a product to the market for consumption. And so those are the three major points that our customers made with us during these voice of the customer meetings. So that led us to say, all right, well, our customers have told us that we're different than many other jurisdictions in the valley. So what did we do? Well, first, we did some research. We surveyed 11 cities to come to an understanding about the preliminary plat approval process in each of these jurisdictions. So you'll see on this chart, the jurisdictions on the left, the population, the number of permits from the last year, and then the particular process that's used for preliminary plats to earn approval. There are three jurisdictions that empower their staff for preliminary plat approval: Chandler, Peoria, and Phoenix. There's several that have Planning Commission approve a preliminary plat, and then there's only two other jurisdictions besides Goodyear, which is Avondale and Surprise, that require preliminary plats to go before both Planning Commission and Council. So of the 11 cities surveyed, there's only two other jurisdictions that have a process identical to Goodyear's. So what that told us was is that what we were hearing from our customers is that they were right. Our process is different, and it's not typical, which identified an opportunity for a proactive change for us. But before we get into the concept of the change, just thought it would be important just to briefly refresh you on the overall development process. So it all starts on the golden—or the butter-colored, if you will, rezone arrow up at the top left. That is where property is rezoned, there's entitlement, and the council has the greatest amount of legislative discretion at that point in time, before the property is entitled. Legislative discretion is very broad. We have to follow state law, and we have to follow city codes and ordinances, but the council has a significant amount of deference in their judgment into granting zoning action. All of the other arrows—from preliminary plat to final plat, building safety—the plans of building safety, construction and inspections, and the final CO—are all administrative or ministerial. I'm going to use those words interchangeably for the rest of the presentation. And what I mean by that is that during each one of those subsequent steps to rezoning, that we already have adopted—City Council and Planning Commission adopted codes and ordinances that we review and check projects against. So if a project is meeting the requirements, it's approved and moves on to the next step. So again, there's two primary functions associated in the development process. There's the legislative function, which council's empowered with a high degree of discretion, and then there's the ministerial or the administrative process, which we're simply checking against things. The preliminary plat, the final plat process, are all administrative and ministerial, whereby we are checking against the approved standards and requirements of the city.
So our next step was to look into, one, what does the state law say about preliminary plats, what's required, and then try and look at what are the potential risks of the different options we have before us. So we researched state law and found that state law does require final plats to be approved by City Council. It also requires that a final plat be found in conformance with a preliminary plat, but it doesn't say that the preliminary plat has to be approved by the City Council. We talked to our partners in legal, and they confirmed that it is not required by state law that preliminary plats be approved by either the Planning and Zoning Commission or City Council. That's only required of final plats. So then we started researching our subdivision regulations and found that the section of the subdivision regulations that talk about the processing haven't been changed since the mid-1970s. And we put the Goodyear population on here just as a comparison because, as you know, in the mid-1970s, we were a very small town. It wasn't until the mid to late 1990s that development really started to pick up in the city of Goodyear. And if we looked back at that slide of the comparison to the other cities, you would see a bit of a comparison between the process that the cities go through and the size and activity level of those communities. It would appear that it's part of the natural process of a city becoming busier and growing that some of the processes do change and evolve to meet the needs of the city. Finally, we went ahead and looked at what's happened recently with the preliminary plats. We chose a year and a half because—we have really good data for a year and a half because that's when our lean efforts have been going on and we've really been analyzing. So during that time period, 19 preliminary plats have become before the City Council. Now, of those, four of those were extensions of preliminary plats. 15 of them were new preliminary plats that council was acting on. And of those, both the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council, none of the stipulations were modified by the commission or the council. Now, I don't want to overlook that there are important questions and discussions happening at council. A lot of times, there are very good questions about life safety issues and community quality. And these are issues that are very important to the community and absolutely that council need to be involved in. And I just want to assure you that a little later in the presentation, Christopher's going to talk about how we think we have ways to make sure that those discussions that need to be happening don't go away, even if the preliminary plat process changed. What we are seeing from this is that when there's no changes to the stipulations, it would indicate that staff is doing a thorough administrative review of the preliminary plat against the regulations and rezone stipulations that council have given us.
So the—how long does it take for a preliminary plat in our current state to get approved? The short answer to that is we looked at those—that body of data that we have that Katie alluded to—or spoke of, rather. And it currently takes 107 business days, which is approximately five months. The chart on the left-hand side—left-hand side, excuse me, of the slide is the process by which to tabulate those days. And these are the mean days that that body of cases generated. So we have first review, applicant makes a submission, first review, staff does a review of the project, takes 15 days. Goes out to the customer. The average time that a project is out with the customer getting either redesigned or addressed—modified to address staff review is 30 days. Second day—second review comes in, it's with staff for 13 days. Same process, goes out to the customer, again, it's with them for 21 days. Comes in for a third review. It's essentially a quick check to make sure everything's in line and we have an approvable application. And then we process it, do their staff reports, and then an approvable application is simply waiting 15 business days in order for a Planning Commission agenda. After the Planning Commission agenda, then it's waiting—and there's a recommendation of approval—approvable—an approvable application is waiting eight days for a council meeting. So of that 107 days, it's out with the customer for 51 business days. It's in city review, a total of 56 days. During that time, an approvable application is simply waiting for a public meeting to occur for an official vote for 23 days. So the total time that a project is in with the city, it's simply waiting for action 41 percent of the time. So as Katie mentioned and outlined, we have—as a group, as a development continuum, has achieved much with our lean process, and we've really focused on internal improvements. How can we be more efficient, more effective, and improve our quality? But based on what our customer said, as Katie said, there's only one—that's only one aspect of the overall spectrum of the development process. So then we began to look at, well, what are other opportunities for improvement? And so the opportunity for improvement lies within the blue box on the right-hand side of the slide. I'm not going to talk about the left-hand side, that's our current state. The future state that we're focusing in on is on the right-hand side in that blue box. So we began to creatively think, how can we improve that aspect of the process in order to even achieve additional efficiency and quality as well? And so after doing this research that we outlined for you tonight, the staff recommendation is to establish a pilot program for one year, which would direct staff—or the pilot program would establish—that preliminary plats would become approvable by staff. As part of this pilot program, we, Development Services, would commit on quarterly reporting to the council on the activities going on as far as development, the geographical dispersion, impact to public services, and things of that nature, so that the council has a wonderful opportunity, as Katie alluded to earlier, to have these strategic discussions about development and impact to the city, its services, and residents. And then the third portion of the recommendation is to direct staff to bring back an ordinance that establishes that pilot program with appropriate checks and balances on internal approval authority. So this is our recommendation for this evening, and then Katie's going to talk about process a little bit more.
So I'm a visual learner. So this is basically the information on the next slide. Christopher's going to go into more detailed in a more visual format. But what I really wanted to point out here is that bottom bar is the process before we changed the commission to council time to a week and a half. It also doesn't include, though, just to remind you what I went over in the beginning, some of the improvements we've made that have really impacted the preliminary plat process include changing that administrative review, so it's no longer taking four days, working on our flow so our turnaround times are going shorter. And if you add those two, plus the change from commission to council from 15 days savings, that's about 25 business days that—from that bottom bar to the middle bar, which is our current process. So—and again, just a reminder, we started lean about two years ago, so it's taken staff about two years to save 25 business days in the process. And it's a very simple improvement. It's moving our planning commission date so we could get to council quicker, but that doesn't mean it doesn't take a lot of hard work and coordination, and not just from the development continuum staff, but from our partners in legal, in the city clerk's office, from all over the city who've helped us make these amazing changes. What's amazing is that from the current process to the process we're recommending, we could save 23 business days. So council could effectively do the same amount of savings that it's taken staff, two years and a lot of blood, sweat, and tears to accomplish in just one action of following staff's recommendation, which would be a huge savings for staff. It's really great—you know, we put a lot of hard work into this, but it always is so rewarding when we hear from our customers that we have the quickest turn times, that they love working with us, that the city of Goodyear is a really special place. But then they add that "but." Your process still isn't the fastest process in the valley. And so what we're saying here is that we're asking for the opportunity to test this pilot program and try out this new process. And what we're really saying is we need your help to take the next step forward in innovation.
So as we normally do, we like to present options to council to consider because there's always more than one answer to any given issue. So you have our staff recommendation, which was the pilot program for one year that we just briefly discussed. So there's options. One is you can leave the preliminary plat approval process as it is, and the process time will continue to be 107 business days, zero customer savings, and zero savings on soft costs for the city. If we change the approval process and have Planning Commission—the end step being the Planning Commission approval of a preliminary plat—the process would reduce to 99 business days. A customer would realize an eight-business-day savings, and the city would realize approximately a $2,100 soft cost savings as well. If we back that up, if you will, to staff approval, the total process time would then be 84 days. The customer would save 23 business days, and the city would realize a soft-cost savings of approximately $6,400 per case. So with that, Mayor and Council, that concludes our presentation, and we're certainly here to answer any questions that you have. We're anticipating a great lively debate and look forward to that. And I'm just going to back it up, if I may, to this one, this slide here, so you can keep it.
That's great.
Thank you.
You're correct. It's going to be active, I'm sure. So who would like to begin on the right-hand side tonight? All right, let's—all right. Councilwoman Bazila?
Hi, Mayor. I have a little different perspective. I think one of our key responsibilities to our citizens is oversight, and oversight in this planning process. When it comes to the preliminary plat, that's our only chance to actually have feedback, regardless of what the ultimate effect has been. If we turn it over or, to me, advocate our responsibility, then when it comes time for us to approve the final plat, really, if everything in the preliminary plat is set, the final plat is pretty much administrative. You can put that on the, you know, on the consent agenda. So from my perspective, it's not so much of a time savings. If they can—if staff can find ways to get it to us quicker, either through work sessions or three-on-three meetings with us ahead of time, to try to shorten that time down from 84 to 107, I wouldn't have a problem with that. But I have a problem with advocating our responsibility and not approving the preliminary plats at council level. That's my position.
Next. Brandon? Brandon?
I had a couple of questions. So maybe it's just my—so the final plat—so if I did go to that spot, I'm concerned about that as well, about our overview. So if it gets to the final plat and we have concerns, or that's the time we're really analyzing it, can we bring it back, amend it, say, hey, I have these concerns, and all that hard work that went through, we can amend or change at that point?
Mayor, Council, the real opportu—real opportunity that the council has to affect change and make a decision that is powerful is during the zoning process, because that is when you have the greatest legislative discretion. Other than—the zoning process, all those other subsequent steps—if I can go back for just a second.
That's the chart there.
Yep. So from the preliminary plat all the way to the right-hand side, we are evaluating projects against a set of approved criteria already. So those steps are already administrative and ministerial. So our thought process—and the city attorney can certainly chime in as well—is that the council has the greatest amount of legislative discretion. council has the greatest amount of legislative discretion during the rezoning process in terms of a layout, or impacts to public, adjoining property, and things of that nature, or the location of a given development. The preliminary plat and the final plat is, is administrative, because we're just checking it against technical guidance.
So if there was something in the project where we didn't like the look?
Please come up to the microphone, let me hear.
So we might, if we didn't like the look, or a gate in the wrong, at the spot that we didn't want the gate to be in, and are there's public feedback in that aspect, or we couldn't necessarily change it at that point with the final plat?
The, Mayor, Council, the, the, again, the, the process is set up such that public participation takes place in zoning. We do not, we are not required, nor do we give public notice of Platts at this point in time, because it's an administrative process. If, if it's, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, I'll wait for you.
If, if it's meeting, we're not going to bring you a project, nor have we brought you a project that does not meet city requirements.
Yeah, yeah. And I'll, I'll chime in on that as well.
This is our attorney speaking.
If you have concerns about locations of gates and some of that sort of things, that really should be addressed in your design guidelines. But I'm not going to tell you that if you switch to this process, and you're only approving at the final plat, you probably shouldn't be, it's a difficult time to make that decision at final plat.
Exactly, exactly.
Those are decisions that need to be made at the preliminary plat stage. So it's your comfort level, the design standards, the design guidelines, engineering standards, and delegating that authority. And if you don't have that comfort level, then this may not be the plan for you.
Yeah. I understand that, maybe you can remind me, so, I think I was on council yet, was the, was the one with, where the residents, another community wanted to not have that gate pass through into, or, yeah, and then have it closed off later on? Was that a zoning, or was that a pre-plat?
The zoning step, that was, that was a zoning matter.
Okay. Thank you. And then...
Next. Sherry?
First of all, I do want to thank you for all your hard work to go through here and everything you've done to cut the timeline, and keep looking at ways to cut the timeline. I think that's really important. I'm not sure where my comfort level is yet. Maybe a pilot program is the way to go, just to see how it works, maybe not, but I do agree in a sense with Councilmember Pizzillo, because I think that is kind of the oversight. So I'm kind of curious, and maybe I missed it, I'm looking at slide, I think 12. If our total is 100, what, 20 days total to council, what is the total, like, for, for Gilbert, and what is the total for some of the other cities? How many days are we looking at for these cities? I couldn't find that in there.
Thank you, Councilmember Loretano. Not everyone tracks their processes. It is very difficult to get that information from other cities, because other cities just don't track it. We haven't called every single city to try and get all of this information, but we wouldn't have been able to provide it necessarily, you know, a few years ago.
Do we have any idea where they are? How many, I mean, are they close? Are we talking 100? Are we talking about 30 days? The ones that go straight to staff? What's the difference, I guess?
Yes, ma'am, and I agree with what Katie, Mayor, Council is, I agree with, exactly with what Katie said. I can tell you that I had a conversation with a customer this morning, who is making a plat application, it's not in yet, but is making a plat application, asked how long it would take, gave him the data, he says, wow, it takes about an extra month to month and a half than the other jurisdictions that I work in.
But we don't know what those other jurisdictions are?
They work in most of these other jurisdictions, in the valley, and also in the Tucson area as well.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I'm still kind of on the fence whether to go with a pilot program, or see if there's a way to just modify it with the planning commission first. I, I'm, I'd like to listen to their comments.
Wally?
Have you looked at cutting down the current process that your staff takes first review, takes 15 days, and that the customer gets 30? And then the second review comes back, and that's 13, and then the customer gets an additional 21 days? So actually, while it sounds like, it is 107 business days, but have you tried to cut down some of our time and the customer's time?
Yes, thank you, absolutely, and we have. That's exactly what we're doing with our turn times.
So it was worse than 107 before you cut it down?
Yes, absolutely. Our, it was 20 days first review, and sometimes we wouldn't even meet that in the past, so we've reduced it significantly. And then we don't give the customer a deadline, that 30 days is what it's been average in those cases we've had in the last year and a half. So we are absolutely looking for ways of, how can we make our comments more clear? How can we make our submittal checklist more clear, so that it, it reduces that turn time for the customer too? But it, you know, we, we don't, that, that's kind of more up to the customer of how long it takes them to reduce. And sometimes that has to do with development activity picking up, that the customers are hiring engineering firms, and they're busy, and, and again, you know, our ultimate customer is usually the landowner or the home builder, but we're, they're working with design firms doing the work for them.
All right, well, speaking only for myself, I'm a very visual person, I want to see the project come back before me. I want, if we just give approval at planning, at the zoning part, I don't know necessarily what they're planning, what the house is going to look like, or where it is. I just want to see it when it's ready to go to production, then I know what is going to be built there. But, I mean, that's just how I, I do it. I like the final say.
Bill?
Can you go back to slide 12, please? If state law requires that a city council approve the final plat, is this chart representative only of the preliminary plat?
Mayor, Council, that's correct. Yes, sir, this is just a preliminary plat process.
Okay.
State law does require all Platts to be approved by council.
Got it. Slide 19 is my second, I wasn't clear on that one. To kind of get to what Councilmember Campbell was talking about, 56, or almost half of this time, of this 107 days, is spent with the customer. We have no control over that time. So essentially, our time is 50-some days, 51 days to be exact, which is a pretty decent turn. And I wonder about our waiting for the commission and waiting for commission to council times, if we couldn't do something better there, as opposed to us giving up our ability to make comments at the preliminary plat process. I do recall a couple of times in the last six months or a year, where we've had some pretty significant dialogue with the applicant present to hear what our concerns were about their development, or that development being, it's the preliminary plat needing to be extended because they're, they're not ready, and we've had the discussion about, well, maybe we just don't do that anymore. And they don't get to hear what our concerns are. And that one customer who hears that concern gets it, but the other three that are waiting get the benefit of that as well, and come in with a much better product. And I recall the conversation that we had, and I don't remember the specific places, but one applicant was in, wanted to reduce lot sizes, didn't have any idea what kind of homes they were going to put on, they had no idea what was going on, couldn't even produce a, even a generic drawing, and we had a huge debate about it that particular night. But that particular debate caused another applicant to come in with a well-thought-out plan ahead of time, that they never would have had the benefit of, had we not had that discussion. Now, having said all of that, in addition, we also then lack the ability to grow as a council, to understand the changing dynamic of the market when the final plat comes before us, that we've gone from a, how did we get to the point where we all said, yeah, sure, no problem, 40-foot lots or 50-foot lots is okay? A year before that, or six months before that, there would have been a hell no, would have been the collective answer. But through that process, we all grew and understood the impacts of the market, and I believe that is a result of those preliminary plat discussions in addition to the zoning, because we've had also the discussion that we're just changing the zoning, we'll get another look at it when it comes back on a preliminary plat, and if it's just the zoning, those zoning hearings now are going to be monstrous, because we're going to want to know a lot more details. I, I think we've looked at the wrong place to try to find an efficiency here. I'm not in support of this whatsoever.
Joanne?
Thank you. So it was, it was kind of cool to see that one slide that showed from the, the time that I started on planning and zoning, in I think 2001, to today, and going from about 20,000 people to almost 80,000. We've grown a lot, and we've, we've gone up and down in, in good growth, smart growth, bad growth, different kinds of things. And, and I'm proud of you guys for the efficiencies. I'm, I'm proud of you for the processes and the steps, just what you've told us in this presentation, what you've done is phenomenal. And, and I have to say that we are builder-friendly. I'm proud that we have changed our residential product sizes, the densities, because of just as Councilmember Stipp said, understanding the market changes, we are builder-friendly. I'm proud that we have clarified things in our design guidelines, and that we have changed things, and that we have even to the sign, design guidelines, you know, all these things that we have changed in the last year, because we want to be builder-friendly, we want to be developer-friendly. We've been going through many, many changes. And I'm, I'm proud that you have collaborated with the customer. We've all collaborated with what we're calling the customer of the builder and the developer. We are builder-friendly, we are developer-friendly. There should be no consideration that we're not, because we are. I will say, though, as a citizen, my customer first is the citizens of Goodyear. And I do not see us bypassing whatsoever the citizens' voice, and that means the planning commission, that means this council. And even for the future, those voices should always come first. And, and I think that we have had so many change, and we want to see all these great things come through and be successful, and at this one, I have to say no, because I want to see that all these great things that we've done really are going to benefit us. And, and I think that, I appreciate you bringing it to us, but I think this, back to Councilmember Pizzillo's comment, this is where we have to make those decisions, not staff. You guys are making tons of decisions, but we have to be the ones to say, no, this is not the quality you want, no, this is not the design of the neighborhood that it should be. Those are the things that have to, to come to us, and there have been many times that I remember, rezones, or zone, zonings, have had conceptual products. They weren't fully vetted out, because then I would hear, oh, well, this is just zoning, you know? So you didn't make the customer have everything ready. And I know Brandon was asking this, this is new to him, how does this all, you know, lay out? And so I'm very proud of everything that you guys have accomplished, that this city's accomplished. We've done a lot, but this is, this is the one thing for me that I think we need to leave it in the process that it is. And maybe there are things that Wally brought up, that Bill brought up, that you can still continue to change, but, you know, so it's one of those, I'm proud of you, but this is, this one for me, I have to draw the line on. I just, I'm not comfortable with this part yet. Thanks.
Sherry?
And I, I have another question. It kind of, kind of leads on to what Joanne was saying. Isn't there a way to tighten it up? I mean, we pretty much meet just about every Monday anymore. I mean, does this have to go to an actual meeting, or can it go to a work session? Or how hard is it staff-wise than to just, like, tonight, have a 10-minute meeting if we had one to approve after this work session? I, I functionally...
So Roy could answer that.
I mean, functionally, procedurally, it doesn't seem like it would be that, we're here every Monday anyway. I don't see why it's taking 15 days.
And I think, I think the waiting issue is for the Planning and Zoning Commission, isn't, don't you mean, you guys meet once a month? And then it's, yeah, so your big waste, the Planning and Zoning Commission, they have tightened up the timeframe to flip it and get it on the next council meeting date, which has been a lot of work with staff, because they're turning it around from that plat approval, B and Z, running it through the process, and getting it on the next council date. So I, I think they've settled that, it's just that 15 days waiting for a commission, because they only meet once a month.
So it's more of the commission waiting than waiting for the council?
Mayor, Council, I think that it's, this is a sequential process, so, you know, during that third review, when we're creating the staff reports, doing the agendas for the planning commission, sending the agendas out, doing minutes, routing it through legal, things of that nature, and then after the planning commission meets, we, we actually repeat that entire process again. So it's a, it's a duplicative step. I hear what you're saying in terms of, it seems like the biggest number is waiting for planning commission on that, on that list, with the exception of out with the customer dates. But nevertheless, it is a, a subsequent process that, you know, have to go to planning commission first and then council. And to, to your point of, or question of, can we just get it on the council agenda quicker, because we're meeting every month? We're already turning that to the next available council meeting, the next council meeting, and it takes eight days to do that.
Now, when we do our pre-meeting, I'm just kind of thinking out loud, when we do our pre-meeting, with, do they, I mean, is there like, a map, is it mapped out for them? If you get it back by this day, we can hit this council meeting, so that they can tighten how long it's sitting with them?
Yes, ma'am, we do that. Katie and her team do that routinely and regularly with every application that, or every pre-application. We give them a, you know, planning commission meets on such-and-such dates, we have to have it to the, you know, this is the process. So we outline all the steps to success as most efficiently as possible for our customers already.
And I think you're doing a great job, and I think if it sits with them for 30 days, there's not a lot we can do. I think I'm kind of agreeing with everyone else, that at this point, I, I'm not seeing how the change is really going to affect, especially when I can't compare it with how it compares, I know you don't have the data, but that's for me to change it, I would have to see, it's been so successful in Peoria, or so successful in Gilbert, and this has been the time that they have, and with their number. If I had data that showed me that, that might be what would sway me, but without that, it seems like I just don't see the need to change without saying, this is such a successful program, like, in Gilbert, and their turnaround's been this fast, and this many days shorter, and they've really cut it down, and, you know, rather than just anecdotal, somebody saying, well, you're, you're quick. Well, I don't know if that person, it just sits with them for that 30 days. So that, that's kind of where I'm at. I, I just, I think it's a good shot, I think you guys made a, a very violent effort, and I like the fact you did go and, and look at this, but for me, I just don't have the data to say, let's move what the known to the unknown without that data point.
True.
Wally?
I have a question to follow up with Councilmember Loretano. So when you, when you tell the applicant it's going before the Planning and Zoning Commission, you do that for their next meeting. Do you ever call a special meeting, so that you can send this through quicker? And are you delayed ever? you delayed ever getting your applicant, your applicant request on the very next city council agenda?
Mayor, Councilperson Campbell, we aren't delayed with the new process. We work, as Rourke indicated, we work very diligently in legal office hours to turn those applications in one day in order for them to be processed on the next available council date.
Yeah, but you're saying next available. I'm asking you the very next council.
It's the very next one. I'll be more precise.
Yeah. If we need to have a longer meeting to get these applications through, then we need to do that. That's part of our job.
Yes, ma'am.
So I just want to make sure we're not delaying you by saying, "Oh, we're already full. You've got to wait until the next one and then the next one."
No, ma'am, that has not been our experience.
Okay, good.
Those applications go from Planning Commission to the next city council meeting.
All right. But Planning Commission, do you ever ask them for a special meeting?
Yes, ma'am, that's where I was headed next. Yes, ma'am, we do have regular meetings. In my two and a half years or so here, we've had probably twice a year. So we do that. We do that when there's a project that a customer absolutely just cannot wait. We do that in order to facilitate a project. And the Planning Commission has been very amenable to that. They've been very willing, it takes some coordination because, you know, if we try and schedule a meeting but we don't have a quorum, then we haven't been successful. So we have to, it takes a lot of coordination for that. But we are happy to do it and we've been able to do that successfully a couple of times.
We appreciate Planning and Zoning willing to have special meetings, especially if we're trying to meet certain deadlines. So, thank you. Joe?
I was just going to reiterate a little bit, other than what I feel strong about on the oversight responsibility. I think Bill raises a very, very great point. He says it much more eloquently than me when he mentioned that other developers, as a result of our discussion at the preliminary plats, came back with a better product the next time, which made things a lot easier for us. So I think there's value from us reviewing so future developers understand where we're coming from as well, because there may be some diverse opinions on us. And we come to consensus and work that out. So when Bill explained a couple of those, Councilmember Stipp explained a couple of situations where that happened, and I remember specifically when that one developer did come back with a full-fledged plan as a result of our discussion earlier, I think there's value in that as well, so.
Although I'd like, because as I remember, they did not have to come back, they were not required to bring a home, a product before us at that time, okay? So that was good of them, but they didn't have to. And that's not required. So why don't you address that?
Yes, Mayor, Mayor, council, thank you. The example that Councilmember Stipp used and Councilmember Pizzillo you're referring to now was actually a zoning case, not a preliminary plat. So those discussions were about, it was a modification to... That's right. Hudson, El Cidro and Hudson Commons, both which are PAD. So because those lot sizes changed, that was a zoning action and the setbacks had to change. It was a PAD.
That was a different one we're talking about, I'm sure.
No, those were the two cases I was referring to. But I think my point is specifically, yes, those may not have been preliminary plats. But the discussions that we have are valuable, not just to that particular applicant, but to all of the applicants that are listening. And I think that's the point. Specifically, that was a great example of how that moved across. And we had already zoned El Cidro, or what's the other one that partners next to it? There's, yeah, I know, there's two of them.
Wes Goodyear. How about Wes?
There's two of them that come together. They're like, one comes and then the other one's right behind. It's like left and right. But those have been, those have already been zoned. They've been, we've extended and extended and extended. And yes, Hudson Commons was coming for the very first time. They didn't have to provide any of that, but they did.
Bring it to.
Yeah, but they did. And they did because of the conversation. So that was my only point. I think we're talking about technicalities here and where we've missed the bigger picture.
Brainerd?
Yeah, I really like that you, with all the lean and with the streamlining the processes and getting customer feedback, I think that's great. And you're getting better and better and better with it, looking for more and more opportunities. So I might be more of the, maybe because I'm new, but you know, the outlier. I think I like option two, maybe going to the Planning Commission, Planning Commission approval, and then maybe leaning more towards eventually the one-year, the one-year pilot. But that's just me. So I'd like to see more, be more competitive and comparable to the other cities. And if we need to move a project quicker, we have the opportunity to do that. 23 days is huge. I mean, the soft savings, I mean, that's like at least one planner.
And that's in business days, the savings in business days.
So you're saying the recommendation that they made, that's what you just made?
I'd probably lean first towards the Planning Commission and then see how that goes. And then maybe go to the one-month, one-year pilot for the staff.
Not the recommendation, not to establish a pilot program?
Yeah. Exactly what you said. The planning and then eventually the staff, so.
Any other comments?
Joanne? I didn't, I'm sorry, I did not hear the process, I think, to Sherry's question about if we were to say, you know, "We're here every single Monday and sometimes it's just work sessions." Is there a reason why we can't have it as a meeting to approve, you know, one of these projects rather than only having two a month where we can do that? I mean, is that a problem? Is it just a special meeting? I mean, what is the difference as to?
Why don't I ask the city manager to address that?
So, excellent question. So I think the point being, and as I'm listening to this as well, it's not as much a function of trying to get the council meeting scheduled, whether it's two a month or if we end up having special ones. It's really a function of having the Planning Commission approve it first, and then eight days later, it's in front of you. So that's how I see it. So trying to insert another meeting, I don't think would help as I understand that. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Any other comments? Well, you can see around the table, I was ready to establish a pilot program for one year, but I can see the council is very uneasy with this. I thought some of their concerns were valid. And it's an individual feeling of responsibility. And I can see that each and every one of them had their own tone to that responsibility. So I don't see this, at this point, going anywhere. Is that the message that you're getting out there? Again, I think it's great what you've done. I think the lean program has been fantastic. You can only do so much, though, on the lean with the amount of people that you've hired to work on it. So no matter what we want and time cut, they're working beyond what the normal hours are on each of these projects. So you've sort of drained that source. They just, I don't think there's just any more energy or time for them to make a difference than what they've done already. So they're looking for that big one. And that has been, since I've been on the council since 2005, and back then I was really in tune because I came from the market, you know? It wasn't so long ago that I sold houses. So I understand exactly what they're saying. I remember my boss saying it to me. It's just, they were waiting, it was county then instead of, but it was a problem. The difference is the cost has elevated to the point so far in production and home building. And they still have to have some kind of profit margin. And then they've got the need of the public. They want it done, i.e. the city want density. We need to bring more people in. We're bringing on more manufacturing companies, more employees in the city, and those people are going to want to live here. So we've got a, yay, I know. So we've got a real dilemma in this. So I'm sorry we couldn't come to something tonight because do I think there's a need for it? Absolutely. But you can see how uncomfortable the council is with that, so.
Mayor, if I may for a second, if, you know, lean journey is an ongoing effort. It's not a one-and-done. There's other improvement ideas and we are focused on making the improvements internally first and then reaching out to our customers to help them make sure that we're communicating clearly to Councilperson Camples or Vice Mayor Camples. Comments, it's out, seems like it's out with the customer a lot. What can we do to get those back quicker? So that's one aspect. But at other times, we need, are going to make recommendations and have conversations with you and the commission in terms of structural alterations of the approval process, because that is integral in the overall horizon to get a project approved. So we can control, we can do in-house. We can work with our customers to facilitate the return of those projects back to us. But there's also the structural ordinance requirements and there's legal requirements. So frankly, there's only so much of that we can do as well. So I want to leave you with, although there may not be support for this idea at this particular time, we are not deterred. And so there's other opportunities that we have identified, zoning ordinance improvements and things of that nature, as Katie and her team are actively working on, that we will be back before you. So although, I'll speak for Katie for a second, we may be a little bit not terribly excited about the feedback that we received tonight. This was a positive conversation. We know where the council is, so we appreciate your clarity in that regard. But again, we aren't stopping and we'll be back with other ideas for you.
I love your spirit. We want to thank you for that. I just want to add one more thing. Behind all these council people happens to be the public. And so that is always the overriding little cloud above our head all the time. Is this right? Is this wrong? And one incident could be detrimental to us. So those are kind of some of the things that are within the psyche of the council. But don't be discouraged. Go out there and find us another way and come back to us. We really appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am, we will.
We're proud of you. I mean, that really should be the final plat. You've done a great job. You have.
Thank you very much. Okay, so I'm going to, we're going, because we're going in a special meeting, so I'm going to ask if anything, the council information or places you've been or something you'd like to give in this meeting. Well, I just want to say a couple of things. The Goodyear Faith and Community Roundtable was absolutely marvelous this week. They're doing a, I'm sure some of you know it, they're doing a resource matrix. And when they get done with this, it's going to be so helpful to you because you have so many of these 501(c)(3) coming to you. It's so many organizations. You say, "Which one is this one? How can I support it?" Or "How can they support each other?" So that's coming out. The pet grooming place across the street just opened. I just want to say you can bring your dog to work. Take it over there, get it groomed, pick it up at night.
You just told everyone they could bring their dog to work.
Okay, just wanted to know that. I didn't give you the name, so I'm not, I went to CrossFerry event for the families. You know, they do that every year. I missed you. I don't know what time that you came in. We missed each other. But they harassed me enough. I got on the bike and did a minute and I got on a bar and I hung for that, okay? So just want you to know that. The other thing was absolutely outstanding, and I'm sorry more of you didn't come. I think Joanne came to the Goodyear Big and Small Arts and that library. And the paintings and artists that contributed that were fan, I mean, really professional. I couldn't afford to buy the painting. It was that good. And some sculptures. And the people stayed. I think I was there 50 minutes, sitting around talking to people and they didn't go anywhere. They stayed there. We had a fluteist play. She had a flute that I'd never seen before, a big white one like this, which gave a different sound, more like the native sound. It was straight. It was absolutely wonderful. But I have to tell you, start attending those. They're really good. They work so hard on this. So with that, I'm going to adjourn this and then we're going to start a special meeting, okay? This meeting is adjourned.